All right, we're going to begin the speaking of Warren County Commissioners and Downed Sessions. Folks, if you have cell phones, please turn it off or turn on the vibrator, please. Gentlemen, if you have hats on, please remove your hats. Please remain standing for prayer and our pledge allegiance, please.
Commissioner Ken Martin is going to lead our prayer tonight, so all bow, please.
Our dear most gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for all the blessings that you give us in our lives. Father, we thank thee for allowing us, for giving us the privilege to grow up in this country and live in Warren County. It is a great privilege to be in that number that we live in. Father, we pray for this commission, we pray for each new member that's going on the commission tonight. We pray for unity as we work together to carry out the work in this county. Father, we ask thee to be with the sick tonight for those who are not able to be here. We pray for Melba Griffith and her family during her illness. Be with us throughout the remainder of this meeting. Father, we pray that the things we say and do will be the best for this county, that we might move it forward. Forgive us of any sins that we have, Father. For these things we ask in thy son's holy name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have a roll call, I'd like to, I've been asked to, y'all would please use your microphones. I think the radio is not able to pick you up without using your microphone, so, uh, those who do call, okay.
Terry Hale?
Here.
Morris Vaughn?
Here.
Carl E. Bolden?
Here.
Carl E. Bolden?
Here.
Teddy Boyd?
Here.
Carlin Brown?
Here.
Blaine Holton?
Here.
Randy England?
Here.
Ronald Jones?
Here.
Ron Lee?
Here.
Gary Martin?
Here.
Ken Martin?
Here.
Michael Martin?
Here.
Carolyn Miller?
Here.
Charles Morgan?
Here.
Gary Prater?
Here.
David Gray?
Here.
Kenny Roberts?
Here.
Scott Ruble?
Here.
Tommy Savage?
Here.
Diane Starkey?
Here.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Here.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Here.
Melissa Yancey?
Here.
Melissa Yancey.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the adopted as a motion.
Motion.
Bill Earl Jones?
Second.
Second by, Marc Vaughn. Any discussion?
I'd like to amend the adopted to accept the resignation of Commissioner Gerald Rowan.
Is that a form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make it a second.
Secondly, uh, Gary Prater, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Three eight, is he okay to do that, Commissioner Martin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's get back to the adopted, we've got a motion, second. All in favor now of President adopted with amendment. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So a motion to suspend the reading of the minutes.
I'm Mr. Martin.
The motion by Commissioner Yancey, second by.
I'll say aye.
Second by Teddy Boyd. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion approved. We will now move into departmental reports, and first of all, Linda Ginsley, financial department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd just like to welcome all the new commissioners and welcome back the returning commissioners. We look forward to working with you in the following months and years. For the new commissioners, you should also have a copy of the fiscal year 2014-15 budget. And if you can't go to sleep at night, just take a look at that, I'll help you. You should have a copy of their report in with your packet. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them at this time.
Motion by Carl, second. Second by Billy Earl Jones. Any discussion?
Yes, everybody, thank you, guys.
Got any discussion on that? All in favor of President Linda's report, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to passes.
Also included on your desk is a copy of a letter that we received from the state of Tennessee regarding the approval of the budget for fiscal year 2014-15. The letter acknowledges receipt of the budget and also constitutes approval by the Comptroller's Office, which is a requirement. Also, they have identified three funds which they've asked that we look at the budget, the fund balances, and we will do that and make a recommendation to them by November the 17th as required. And we just needed to make sure all commissioners got a copy of the letter and that it was spread upon the minutes of the meeting tonight. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Linda. We'll move on to the next topic, the report, Ms. Lottles. Give your notes.
Thank you, Ms. Lottles out of town this evening. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, you have our extension report there. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. And on behalf of Hilda, myself, and the rest of the staff at the extension office, we welcome the new commissioners as well as the previous ones, and we look forward to working with all of you in the future.
Motion.
Motion by Gary, third, second. You saying Ron Lay, you got any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I said, thank you, your notes. The airport commission, Mr. Trump.
Good evening, sir.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. If you have a copy of my report, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Motion by Carl, both, the first, second.
Second.
Second by Diane Starkey. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to pass.
Thank you, sir.
Motion by Mr. May.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, you have a copy of my report. Please let me know if there are any questions.
Move to the adopted. Two of them, ten. Charles Morgan, except second. Second by Blaine Holton. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion to passes. EMS, Brian James.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, if you have any questions, turn them over to the court at this time.
Motion to pass. Motion by Teddy Boyd, second. Second by Carl Bolden. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to passes. EMS, Brian James.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, if you have any questions, turn them over to the court at this time.
Motion to pass. Motion by Teddy Boyd, second. Second by Carl Bolden. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to passes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The industrial board, Dr. Dennis, second.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. And I want to address your previous commissioners. I know better than to say old commissioners. And new commissioners, you have a copy of my report, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Motion approved. Motion by Ron Lay, second. Second by Ken Martin. Any questions?
Yeah, question.
Don, do you have any light news on the D and Plastics, I mean, when is it, how are they supposed to be?
The last that I've heard that they're looking at possibly the middle of October to be at a point where they'll receive their certificate of occupancy. And as far as I know, they're still on track for that. We've done very well, and the contractors have done extremely well in keeping that on track. And I think we're right on schedule for that.
Looks good.
Thank you.
I think you're doing a good job.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll move into, oh, I'm sorry, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Before we move into our committee of votes, I've got the slate there, so if you wish to speak, please your raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. We don't have any speaking, I recognize you. And also, we will not have any long speeches in here, any dissertations unless it requires you say may before you say you. I will read a couple speeches to a minute and a half, and I'm the time keeper, so we'll move on into the standing committees, and that's budget finance, Ray Bell.
Mr. Chairman, this time budget finance has nothing to report.
Thank you. Building grounds, all over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, building grounds has nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Economic and agriculture development has nothing to report. Education.
At this time, education has nothing to report.
Finance, man, but nothing is.
Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report this time, other than there will be a meeting scheduled sometime this month, but as yet, it has not been scheduled.
Well, fire Commissioner Wiltshire, Blaine Wiltshire.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report this time.
Thank you. Highway bridge, Commissioner Prater.
Mr. Chairman, we have nothing to report this time, thank you.
Thank you. Policy personnel, Commissioner Martin.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I have, we are in process of hiring two new judicial commissioners, that could be my new white coat.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for me having that to report.
Thank you. We'll move into our special committees. Marc Vaughn, Mr. Bronzell, over, second.
Mr. Chairman, out of the general debate, that's 369 invites, which 65 of them will like us, have nothing else.
We just, Commissioner Martin.
This time, we have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move into our new business, and the first out of this, I'll let the chairman of the Warren County Commission, and I would open the floor for nomination.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to recommend that we elect County Safety Officer Ward as chairman.
Put that, second. Okay, motion, second, Billy Earl Jones. Okay, got that. Other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that nomination cease.
Is there any other nomination before I ask for a second? Any other nomination? Is there a second? We got a second. Second on the nomination cease. Any moment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, thank you, thank you, commissioners, I appreciate that, gentlemen. Okay, the next is the form of standing committees, and you have that. You see my committees, that we've worked on, and you see who I have put in there, who is a public attorney, and so I would entertain the motion to, to those committees.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made for Commissioner Yancey, is a second.
Second.
Second by opposed. Blaine Holton, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's one, one vote. Okay, item three is approval of bonds for elected officials, and we'll turn that over to Ms. Scott.
I have the bond for Bernie Morris, Circuit Court clerk, in an amount of $50,000. I have the bond for Terry Smith, register of deeds, in an amount of $50,000. I have the bond for Lisa Ann Smart, the county clerk, in an amount of $50,000. I have the bond for Jackie Laffey, for sheriff, in an amount of $100,000. I have the bond for Herschel Wells Senior, for county executive, in an amount of $100,000. I have the bond for Levy Glenn, for superintendent of highway, in an amount of $100,000. And the bond for Darlene Bryant, trustee and tax collector, in an amount of $1,643,997. That's all of them.
All in favor? Is that motion to a break?
Motion.
Motion by Diane, second.
Motion.
Second by Blaine Holton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, okay, we'll have to have a roll call, I'm sorry.
Terry Bailey?
Yes.
Morris Vaughn?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carlin Brown?
Yes.
Blaine Holton?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Ronald Jones?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Gray?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Diane Starkey?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Melissa Yancey?
Yes.
And one more chance, you're up. One, two, yes.
Thank you. We'll proceed to item three, Mr. Ken Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a resignation letter from Gerald Rowan, who had resigned for personal reasons from policy and personnel. See the letter on the fourth, and we met, and the policy and personnel, that time, was three oh to accept a resignation, and I saw it.
This is our second.
Second.
Second by Marc Vaughn. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to passes. Okay, now we'll move to the item four, which is four members to the financial management committee. I've got this to read, and I want to do it another time. As specified, Tennessee Code of Antedating, five dash twenty-one dash one oh four, D, the committee is made up of.
County mayor, supervisor of highways, director of schools, four members elected by the county legislative body. The four elected members are to serve one-year terms, and the legislative body must repeat the election procedure annually thereafter during regular September sessions of the county court. Stipulations regarding eligibility to serve on the financial management committee are included in section 2.1 of the county's 1981 CFMS Financial Policy and Procedures Manual, which all of you have a copy. A copy of the manual is attached for your reference. It was in your, it was in your packet. I will read this. This is from, from your manual. It's on page two. Any person appointed to serve as member of the financial management committee may not have any member of his/her immediate family employed by Warren County. Immediate family member is defined as spouse, child, grandchild, parent, sibling, grandparent, that was grandchild, I'm sorry, grandparent, stepchild, stepparent, stepbrother, stepsister, parents-in-law, son-in-law, daughter-in-law, brother, and sister-in-law. None of that, if you have any of those close acquaintances in your family, you cannot serve. Any person appointed to serve as a member of the financial management committee may not be employed by Warren County during his or her service on the committee, with the exception of Warren County commissioners. Any person appointed to serve as a member of the financial management committee may not be contracted by Warren County during his or her service on the committee. And also, this committee meets at 3:30 each afternoon, each day that we do meet. And so if you can't meet at 3:30, and the reason we do this is on account of the help that we have, which is in the financial office, and we met after hours, then that comes into comp time. Now, this is very important right here, be sure and listen to this. If you have any questions now, before we vote, you've already been handed your tabulation sheet. Okay, like, like they said, there are county executives, superintendent of highways, director of schools, and four additional members. They're either elected or appointed by the county commission. These are the procedures, okay? Inform the commission of persons who have offered to serve on this committee, that means you'll stand up and nominate whoever, and they'll need a second. Inform commission that appointments will be for a one-year term to expire in September 2015, with reappointments to be made annually thereafter. Accept nominations from the, from county commissioners. Obtain second for each nomination. Commissioners may, at separate times, nominate more than one person. Commissioners nominating a person not present must confirm that the person is willing to serve. Review qualifications of members, and that's just chapter two, section 2.1, that's just what I read to you. We must receive a minimum of four nominations. Accept all nominations, they're unlimited. After each motion to cease nominations, may be accepted. Inform any commissioners nominated that they may vote for themselves, so you can vote for yourselves if you're nominated. Confirm that any person present and nominated are willing to serve. Inform commissioners that each commissioner gets four, you only get four, yes votes, with the remainder votes to be nay or pass, and we accept those as a no vote. Organize names of nominees into alphabetical order prior to voting. We'll do that up here, and you can write it down. Roll call votes, we will alternate, starting at the top, which will be Commissioner Bell the first time, next time, we'll start at the bottom and go up. Four nominees receiving the top number of votes will be appointed to the committee. So in other words, if we have one guy gets 12, or one lady, we have two others to get nine, and they tie, then they are first, second, and third, that's the way that will work. In case of tie votes, the logical solution will be determined. So do we have any questions? We'd be glad to go over all of this.
Mr. Chairman, do you know that other week, this committee would be meeting on?
No, sir, I don't. Usually, normally on Thursday, but, you know, there may be some other, but normally, it's a Thursday at 3:30.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to nominate Terry Boyd to serve on this committee.
Got a, a motion by Diane Stark, Commissioner Starky, for Terry Bell, and a second by Billy Earl Jones.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner.
I'd like to nominate Billy Earl Jones for this committee, please.
Commissioner Lee nominates Billy Earl Jones, is there a second? Second by Carl Bolden.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Carl E. Bolden.
No, he can't serve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Blaine Wiltshire.
Okay, Commissioner Boyd nominates Commissioner Wilt, Blaine Wiltshire.
Mr. Chairman?
Only I gotta get a second. Is there a second? Second for Blaine?
I'll second that.
Yes, I have, I have a second by Scott Ruble. Yes, Scott.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Randy England to serve on this committee.
Commissioner Ruble nominates Randy England as a second.
Second by Commissioner Yancey.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Wayne Holton, please.
Commissioner Morgan nominates Wayne Holton, second, second by, second by Commissioner Morris Vaughn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Tommy Savage.
Commissioner Vaughn nominates Tommy Savage. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Where'd that come from? Terry Bell, Commissioner Bell, second is Tommy Savage.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Bob Warren.
Bob Warren?
Yes, sir.
No, is he, he's not, is he here?
He's not present, but he can't serve.
What, did he tell you he'd serve? Is there a second? Second for Mr., for Mr. Warren? Is there a second for Mr. Warren? Strike his name with the lack of a second. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Travis Whitehead. He is available to serve, he's a local business owner.
Commissioner Blaine, Shane Wiltshire nominates Travis Whitehead. Is there a second? That's for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Ronnie Lee, please.
Commissioner Holton nominates Commissioner Lee. Is there a second? Where'd that come from? Charles Morgan, Commissioner Morgan, second, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we cease nominations. Second.
Okay, I want to make sure, no other, nobody else is, wants to nominate. I have a motion and a second, all nominations ceases. Vote, say an aye. Any discussion on that? Or, it should have been. Any nay votes? All nominations cease. Okay, it'll take us a few minutes to get all these down, get them in alphabetical Remember, you have four yes votes, is all you have. Every other thing is considered, ain't no vote.
Len, if you had written, you got that list, would you read those off, those slow so that I can get them out there, please?
Uh, the first one will be Commissioner Terry Bell. The next is Commissioner Copeland, Wayne Copeland. Commissioner Randy England. Commissioner Billy Earl Jones. Commissioner Ronnie Lee. Commissioner Tommy Savage, and Commissioner Blaine Wiltshire. Is there anyone that we've missed?
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Bell, and call the roll, please.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Earl Jones?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Ray?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Diane Starky?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
No.
Melissa Yancy?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
It will start at the bottom on what, Mr. Commissioner Copeland, call the roll, please.
Melissa Yancy?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes. No, that's a no.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Diane Starky?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
David Ray?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Earl Jones?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd? Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Yes.
Anyone want to change their vote?
Twenty-three, twenty-two, yes, two, two, uh, no, since then. Okay, start at Randy England, start at the top, Commissioner England.
Terry Bell?
Pass.
Morris Bond?
Pass.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Pass.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
No.
Randy England?
Yes.
Earl Jones? Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Ken Martin?
Pass.
Michael Martin?
Pass.
Carolyn Miller?
Pass.
Charles Morgan?
Pass.
Gary Prater?
Pass.
David Ray?
Pass.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Diane Starky?
Pass.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Melissa Yancy?
Yes.
We had eight yes, sixteen no, and, uh, remember now that you only have, uh, four yes votes. Okay, Billy Earl Jones, we'll start at the bottom.
Melissa Yancy?
Yes.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Pass.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Yes.
Diane Starky?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Kenny Roberts?
Pass.
David Ray?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Earl Jones?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Yes.
Teddy Boyd?
Pass.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden?
Yes.
Morris Bond?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
We had twenty yes, four no's. Okay, Commissioner Lee, we'll start at the top, listen.
Terry Bell?
Pass.
Morris Bond?
Pass.
Carl D. Bolden?
Pass.
Carl E. Bolden?
Pass.
Teddy Boyd?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
Wayne Copeland?
Yes.
Randy England?
Pass.
Earl Jones? Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Pass.
Michael Martin?
Pass.
Carolyn Miller?
Yes.
Charles Morgan?
Yes.
Gary Prater?
Yes.
David Ray?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Diane Starky?
Pass.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
No.
Melissa Yancy? Does anyone want to change their vote?
Melissa, I've got you down, and they've got you down, it's five yeses, so. Yes. Okay. That's nine yes, fifteen no. Okay, Tommy Savage, start at the bottom.
Melissa Yancy?
Pass.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Yes.
Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Diane Starky?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Kenny Roberts?
Pass.
David Ray? Gary Prater? Charles Morgan? Carolyn Miller?
Pass.
Michael Martin?
Yes.
Ken Martin?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Ron Lee?
Pass.
Earl Jones? Randy England?
Yes.
Wayne Copeland?
Pass.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
Teddy Boyd?
Pass.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl D. Bolden? Morris Bond?
Yes.
Terry Bell?
Ten yes, fourteen no. Next is Blaine Wiltshire, we'll start at the top.
Terry Bell? Morris Bond? Carl Bolden?
No.
Carl D. Bolden, I'm sorry.
Pass.
Carl E. Bolden?
No.
Teddy Boyd?
Yes.
Carleen Brown?
Pass.
Wayne Copeland?
Pass.
Randy England?
Pass.
Earl Jones? Ron Lee?
Pass.
Gary Martin?
Pass.
Ken Martin?
No.
Michael Martin?
No.
Carolyn Miller?
Pass.
Charles Morgan?
No.
Gary Prater?
No.
David Ray?
No.
Kenny Roberts?
No.
Scott Ruble?
Pass.
Tommy Savage?
Pass.
Diane Starky? Blaine Wiltshire?
Pass.
Michael Shane Wiltshire?
Pass.
Melissa Yancy? Anyone want to change their vote?
Okay, what we, what we got, uh, Terry Bell had twenty-three, Wayne Copeland had twenty-two, Randy England had eight, Billy Earl Jones had twenty, Ronnie, Commissioner Lee had nine, Commissioner Savage had ten, and Commissioner Wiltshire had one. So, the new, uh, Financial Management Committee members are Bell, Copeland, Jones, and Tommy Savage, Commissioner Savage. And I do thank y'all for that. Okay, approval of notaries.
This is the list for the notaries. Barbara Roller, Tina Bassam, Robin Cutrel, Ron Neal, Ivette Gale, Emily C. Hennessy, Deanna K. Elder, Tonette Boi, Boyd, I'm sorry, Desa Reed, Richard A. Doris, Teresa McCurry, Fred Lee Hoover, Donna Davis, Frida L. Griffith, Becky Adams Hogs, James Hal Broom, Kerry Davis Marcom, and Cassidy L. Cantrell.
Voured approved.
Second, second motion by Mark Bond, Commissioner Bond approves. Second by Commissioner Martin, all in favor? Uh, all opposed? Okay, I've got these few announcements. The Tennessee County Commission Association Regional Meeting will be Tuesday, September the 23rd, at Dale Monaco Winery in Baxter. You can call Carol if you plan to attend. The new commissioners, please stay for website pictures. Also, all committee members, please stay up. Charlie wants to go ahead, and we've got twenty-four here, we want to get a complete picture of all the commissioners, one group picture. And also, new commissioners, you may have already done this, but please check with Melanie Lanier for any employment or insurance information that needs to be completed. So, she's here, so be sure, is they already done this, or do you? Okay, the return ones, okay, any of the old ones. And, uh, all of you, uh, chairman of the committees, be sure, be sure you have somebody in your committee, take, take minutes. We need those minutes in the office the next morning. And be sure that you list any visitors, be sure you list any, any documentation, anything that was voted on, what the vote was, four, three, or two, three, two, four, zero, be sure that's listed. And, because if you don't get that into the, uh, office, there's no pay for you. So, uh, until we get that and get it to, uh, Linda and she gets it to Melanie, there's no pay. So, be sure you get that, if you get that into Carol, she'll type it up for you and get it back to you for your approval. So, that would really be good. And, uh, so everybody stay for a group picture, plus, plus your other pictures. So, motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Prater? Yeah, those, those yes, please. Motion, motion by Commissioner Prater, second by Carl Bolden, Carl E. Bolden, all in favor? Uh, good.